Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the May 11th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting of Newtown Township. As I call this meeting to order, it is customary that we hold a moment of silence. Since our last meeting, this community's been rocked by a triple tragedy. So I would ask maybe this evening that we take a moment to give some thought and support to the families and the communities that have been recently affected by the tragedy to homicide three victims. So let us observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join the board in their pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
There's one change, Mr. Chairman. Item 10A related to the Wawa application has been removed at the request of the applicant.
Okay. So there will be no presentation by Profco this evening. No special actions. That brings us to our first round of public comment. So if there's anyone who'd like to give comment, may I ask that you come forward, state your name and where you're from, and we'll go from there. And we would like folks from Newtown, but I know Mr. Cooper is from Newtown, so we prefer that Newtown folks get the first chance. Thank you.
All right. Hello, my name is Bradley Cooper. I live in Newtown Grant and am a resident since 1999. And I just learned not too long ago from you guys that Wawa has canceled their presentation that they're supposed to be having today. And I think this is very telling on how they're treating you as supervisors, how they're treating the community, how they're treating people that live in Newtown that are very concerned about all the stuff that could happen, positive, negative, however you want to view it, going on with Wawa, that they're basically dictating how you run your meeting, when you run your meeting, who should come, when they come, not come, that they're telling you what is going on or whatever, that they are going to dictate that, oh, we're going to come when we feel like it, oh, I got the sniffles, I'm not going to show up or whatever. Understand, you know, with COVID, people's sicknesses or whatever, if that's the case, again, I don't know the reason why they didn't show up, but there's a bunch of different reasons why they didn't show up. They're just trying to play games, in my opinion, so people don't show up to go against them, to tell them that, you know, oh, we don't like them, that they want to come at a secret time with the doors are shut so no one knows, hey, we showed up, or that we're here or whatever. I think this should be a direct no from everybody voting here because of the way that they're treating you guys, treating people like me who have concerns and problems with them, business owners who spent time to possibly come today that changed their whole life schedule to be here or whatever, that they're just not giving any care or consideration to Newtown, the businesses, the community, they're just basically saying, oh, we're just going to come whenever we feel like it, we're going to show up whenever we feel like it, just so it pleases us or makes us happy or because we're inconvenienced at this time for whatever reason or whatever. Even if the applicants don't live in Newtown, it shouldn't matter where they live, they should be here when you schedule it, it should be on the schedule, them making their speeches of why they should be here, their proposals, and that should be it. And if they don't show up, that should be an instant no because of how they're treating the community and how they're telling you guys how to run your meeting. You guys are the people that run the meeting, you put the agenda together. If they don't show up, then that should be, oh, well, then they don't have anything to present to us, then that's a no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I was just about ready to say, hang on, move on. Please turn the microphone on and...
Hi, my name's Tom Durkitts. I came up here in support of the people opposed to the Wawa because I come from Holland and they're about to, they're trying again to put a Wawa two doors from my house. And I live directly on Buck Road, and my next thing that I would like to do is to tape the video, the cars and trucks at rush hour going by my house. It's been changed to 11 miles an hour, I mean, 25 miles an hour there. And I saw a pickup truck pass against the yellow line right in front of my house, past another car, going up the hill. So my viewpoint is the Wawa doesn't really care about municipalities, they don't care about the residents who they are basically pushing into their communities against their will. We already have a Wawa in Holland, but there's no gas pumps there. And I think the Wawa organization is a fuel company. They're pushing these gas stations into communities. Someone who was going to be here tonight, but evidently they got news that the Wawa isn't going to be here polled the Cherry Hill, New Jersey area in a five-mile radius, there are 29 Wawas. Now, from what I can see, they want a Wawa every two to two and a half miles. So if you want them to take over Bucks County, then you vote for them. But as far as I can see, they're like what's going on in Ukraine, and I stand with Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to, before we go on, hang on, there's another, someone coming up here first, and then we'll get to you. If folks from outside the township want to give testimony, that's great. I want to give the township folks the first chance. Also, I'd like to keep the comments to focus on this Wawa at this location at this time rather than get the situation in Northampton, I go by there all the time, it's completely, it's very much different than what we have here. And you can be for it, against it, but Mr. DeApril, you're on.
John DeApril, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. Is there any truth to the rumor that the Wawa was pushed back because Johnny Mack didn't get a chance to talk to his Karens? Thanks.
I'm Norm Seager. I live in the village of Newtown. First of all, I'd like to commend our police department. I was at a recent meet and greet and expressed concern over speeding on Upper Silver Lake, which is a very easy road to speed on since it's downhill a lot of it. But I addressed that concern with the chief and some of his officers. And the next day, we had a sign up, a blinking sign that shows mile per hour, and the speed has actually dropped dramatically. Everybody seems to be doing 35 miles an hour. So thank you to the chief and Newtown police. I just want to go back over, I know I'm repeating myself. In 2020, November 8, there was gunfire out of Morrisville, Wawa. November 30, 2021, Ben Salem had a shooting. September 26, 2021, Wawa shooting in Montgomery County, two injured. December 31, 2021, one killed in a shooting in Delaware County. We had a man shot at Street Road in Bucks County, not far from where they're proposing another Bucks County. And since that time, there have been numerous shootings in Philadelphia as well as Radnor, PA, with multiple deaths in both. So that's what we're in for if this goes through, we'll say goodbye to historic Newtown. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. Move on to reports of boards and committees. And I see Ms. Peggy Driscoll is in the room. What is yours?
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Newtown Township Planning Commission, here to give you a report on our May 3 meeting. The first item on our agenda was the Bucks County Planning Commission, the LI and the OLI review, that's the Light Office and Office, Light Industrial and Office, Light Industrial Review. Bucks County Planning Commission representatives gave the Planning Commission an overview of the concept of an overlay district for the Business Commons, explaining that within an overlay, some loosened requirements or additional uses could be added to the existing zoning. The recommendation was to create a corridor within the Commons to be included in the overlay following the interior route of the SEPTA R130 bus. Parcels along the perimeter are mostly adjacent to residential zoning were not included in the overlay. They provided us with packets of written information on other municipalities, including Northampton, who have adopted this concept. The commission was not given the packet in advance, so we were not completely prepared to discuss it. We will be reviewing what has been provided and discussing at future meetings. We expect to have a second meeting with the Bucks County Planning Commission before the end of the summer. It is also our intention to share the packet with the Economic Development Committee for their input. And the other item we had was the JMZO wireless ordinance. We reviewed this ordinance and recommended that the board authorize advertisement as presented with a side correspondence letter as outlined in the review letter of CKS Engineering dated April 20, which was attached, which highlights a number of clarifications and possible changes to the design manual attached to the ordinance. The vote was six to one. A number of people were in attendance to discuss their objections to the ordinance because of possible health issues. And that was all we had.
Any questions for the Planning Commission?
I don't know if I have a question. I just didn't understand what a corridor, what they meant by a corridor because I was at the meeting, maybe I just wasn't listening well enough.
I think the streets in the Commons that abut residential house, you know, the houses that are back there, probably more along Pheasant down by where they wanted to put Doggy Day Care.
And it sounded like it was connected to the SEPTA bus route.
The SEPTA one, the bus route that goes through, yes, yes. I mean, we received the packet at the meeting, so really none of us had a chance to look at anything at that time. So they will be coming back, and this is going to be a process, it's probably going to take quite a few meetings.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to reports from board members. And I have a short little recognition I'd like to give, I'd like to read. I sent this to Chief Hearn. I wanted to acknowledge the excellent work performed by the Newtown Township Police Department during the recent homicides in Newtown and Upper Makefield. I know other departments and law enforcement officers were involved, but the Newtown Township Police Department was, has only reinforced my opinion that we are well-served. And in my memory, it has been years since there's been an incident like this, and then to have two in two weeks. It's just, it is very tragic. I just, I wanted the police department, all the men and women, to just know that I admire their hard work, their compassion, their professionalism, and it also speaks to their high level of training. And I hope the rest of the board agrees with me. Beyond the recognition, though, I wanted to, I believe that beyond the recognition, I believe that no matter how professional the officer, they are human. They are undoubtedly exposed to traumatic situations routinely, maybe not every day, but routinely. I hope the department is monitoring the workforce for signs of vicarious and secondary trauma. I know I had a long mental health career in Philadelphia, and any time that I would do an involuntary commitment to the hospital, I would have to take some time for myself just because. So I'm aware of the, some of the things that we need to just keep an eye on. I'm also aware that some of the department's staff have had relationships and acquaintances with the victims and some of the families. As that tends to happen in small towns, we just need to help each other. And I invited the chief to let us know if there's some way that the Board of Supervisors and maybe even the community can help in some small, non-interfering way. Again, I want to thank the department for what it does 24/7, 365. And any other, oh, yeah, I have one other actual response that I wanted to give to Mr. Cooper, and this is my time to do it. So we will be sure that people know when Wawa is back on the agenda. I can promise you that. There'll be several different ways that you're informed, I'm sure. Other than that, Mr. Mack, anything?
Yes, I have a few things. We met at the Joint Zoning Council on May 5, and they did send out a notice to the supervisors about what occurred there, I'm sure you know, but just for the public, regarding the wireless ordinance known as 5G, it was verified that the Upper Makefield Township has not yet approved for advertising that ordinance as of May 5. Also, the JZC recommended that we look over that ordinance, and they're waiting for our decision on that. The other thing was the electric vehicle charging station. I had asked that perhaps one of the applicants of Volt, what is it, Volt, Volta?
Volta.
Volta Charging be able to attend a jointure meeting so that they can explain their concept of a charging station and further educate the council, but the council refused to have them as a guest. The Bucks County Planning Commission has put out a draft of the comprehensive plan and is advising the board, everybody on the board, to make comments on it and send it back to them. I also attended the Bucks County Tax Collection Committee on the 28th of April, and the Keystone Collections made an update on earned income tax revenue. It was up 11.5% in 2021 versus 2020, and it's also up in the first quarter of 2022. So that looks good for revenue. Let's see, I attended, I'm supposed to be the liaison with homeowners associations. So I attended a meeting of the Woods of Saxony Home Owners Association, and they were telling me about their concerns about the Lower Dolington Trail. And I think we worked it out with the township that the person who's responsible in that HOA will be able to go with, I think, Leanna, when you do the punch list, I talked to Micah about that, and I think there was some agreement to that. I don't know when that's going to happen, after the project's completed, just so their concerns have been met. And in my own HOA, a member asked me about speeding on Davis Lane. Chief, I know you put that electronic sign on one of the roads that residents just mentioned, it's very effective. On Davis Lane, there is a crossing that goes across that lane, there's no official pedestrian crossing, and there's, people are speeding, and there are residents who have small children that live on that street. So if we can get on that schedule for that sign, it would be very helpful. I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. And as a segue to Ms. Snyder, I'll point out that I got my copy of the comprehensive plan in my reading for the next week, all 300 pages or whatever. Ms. Snyder?
First, I'd like to address Chief Hearn, and I want to tell you about my community and how thankful they are to have you and our force, and how sorry we are that you had to witness and your men had to witness what you witnessed, and everybody is thinking about all of you. So I wanted to pass that on to you because it was really important to do so, and I thank you for all of that, for witnessing what none of us want to witness. Thank you. Also, Monday, we had an environmental advisory committee meeting where we talked about renewable energy sources for our campus here. We also talked about the environmental impact statement for the Wawa, which we're not going to discuss tonight, obviously. And also, we're having a work session on Monday about technical issues in this room and the equipment that we use that needs an upgrade. So that's, is that 7:00, Dennis?
I believe it's 7:00.
Mr. Manager? Yep.
That's all. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Claver?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today I have topics for the Park and Rec Department. Registered today for the following upcoming programs, Schools Out Workshop, Kawaii Art, hope I pronounced that correctly. There's a Pokemon card class, Safe Functional Fitness for Spinal Instability. And Summers Around the Corner, they have weekly summer camps for every interest, including sports, art, cooking, and STEM. Their pavilion rental dates are filling up fast. Please visit the Township Park and Rec Department website for facts and calendars for the pavilions. Half-day playground camp director, ages 21 plus is needed. Please visit newtownfund.com for an application. And finally, discount movie tickets are available to purchase at the Park and Rec office, and set-in place tickets are available for pre-order at a discounted price of $17. And that's it for the Park and Rec report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, moving right along, there's no public hearings. As of now, there's no land development. Or to reports of officials, and I see that the engineer has no agenda items, so we'll move right to the Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on our report this evening is the board's consideration of a conditional use decision that we have drafted for the Borscht Belt Delicatessen. You'll recall at your last meeting, a conditional use hearing was held, the board approved that conditional use application, and it would be appropriate for a motion to approve the decision granting that conditional use.
Do we have such a motion?
Motion approved.
It's a motion for the, to approve the written decision of conditional use for Borscht Belt Deli. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? Again, this is the written, we're just approving the written?
Correct. You're not granting the conditional use, you did that already, it's just approving the written decision.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the questions. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. The second item is similarly a conditional use decision. This one is for the business called Forever Young Medical Spa. This is actually right next door to the Borscht Belt Delicatessen. We drafted the decision for this application, and it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve the written decision for Forever Young Med Spa.
Do we have such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the questions. Those in favor of approving the conditional use for Forever Young Med Spa, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item is a decision on a PRD variance case that the board heard at its last meeting. It granted the application of the Torox for 183 Greenbrier Lane to allow them to enclose their existing patio. We've drafted a decision and order in that case and would ask for a motion to approve that decision.
Do we have such a motion? I'll make that motion. We have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Again, we had this hearing last week, two weeks ago. Any from the public? Any discussion? Seeing none? Call the questions. Those in favor of approving the PRD variance decision, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The final item on our report is consideration of awarding a bid for the stormwater work in the Brookshire Phase 2 development. Recall that Brookshire Phase 2 was completed by Orleans Home Builders, but there was some stormwater ponding and some issues with adjacent property owners, the Majuskis and the Martinaliches. After many moons of negotiating, we entered into a settlement agreement with Orleans. Orleans has posted the amount of $60,000 to cover this work. The CKS engineers bid the work and received bids according to Michelle Fountain's letter of May 3, 2022. The low bid was in the amount of $33,929, and CKS recommends that the board award the bid to Passerini &amp; Sons Inc. of Hilltown, PA, in the amount of $33,929 for the stormwater work at Brookshire Phase 2. Again, no township funds are being used, this is all developer funds.
From Escrow.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? Someone like to make a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Do we have a second? I'll second it this time. So the motion and a second for considering the awarding the bid for Brookshire Phase 2 stormwater work to Passerini &amp; Sons Inc. All those in favor, no, I didn't ask for public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, call the question. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our report.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Solicitor. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $6,116,175. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. We have Chief Hearn to give the monthly police report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, good evening, board members. First off, I'd like to thank the board members and the community for recognizing my officers in my department for the actions taken this past month. They do it on a 24-hour, seven days a week, 365-day-a-year basis, but I do appreciate the recognition, and I'll pass that information along to the officers. For the month of April, we had 1,492 calls for service, we allowed 21,503 miles of patrol vehicle miles, we had 20 arrests, which included the one murder, one assault, one violation of Firearms Act, six DUIs, two six DUIs, two frauds, one forgery, three thefts, four narcotics, and one protection from abuse violation. There were 29 new cases referred to our detective division, and nine crime scenes were processed. There were 45 traffic crashes, three injuries, and 12 non-injuries. There were a total of 116 citations issued and 167 warnings issued. The notable jobs for the month, obviously, everybody knows about the homicide on David Drive on 4/29, 4:56 a.m. in the morning. It was domestic-related. There were two narcotic overdoses where Narcan was administered by my officers. Sergeant Bartle and Police Officer Helvick revived the one gentleman. And Police Officer Mystic revived the other one. They were both successfully revived and treated at the local hospital. On 5/2, we've noticed, it was in May, at 7:00 a.m., notable jobs as well. Newtown police officers assisted Upper Makefield with the shooting of the two children, including carrying the children, securing a crime scene and an apprehension of the actual offender. Selected enforcement, we had three truck enforcement details for the month of April. Total of 21 inspections of trucks. We received $2,058 in reimbursed DUI grant enforcement training. Our mock assessment was on 4/11 and placed our department ready for our schedule for our PLEAC on-site accreditation assessment, which is done on May 24. So I'm expecting another successful accreditation. Public service announcements. Several events in the month of May. We had the touch of truck April 14, coffee with a cop on April 21, and a DA drug takeback on April 30, where we collected 83.3 pounds of unwanted narcotics. Coming up, Cars, Cops, and Coffee on May 22 at Veterans Park. If you have a classic car, please bring it down. It must be clean. On May 23, Monday evening at 7:00 p.m. at St. Andrews Catholic Church is the Bucks County Law Enforcement Memorial Service, where we're honoring 15 Bucks County law enforcement officers who were killed or died in the line of duty for Bucks County. Finally, on May 30, we have the Memorial Day Parade, 9:00 a.m. There will be road closures in the area of Sycamore, Richmore, and streets in the borough. So pay attention to social media and postings of the signs. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the chief?
I don't really have a question. I want to thank the officers for saving two lives. That should count, and I think it does. I know that the Centers for Disease Control has come out saying that 2021 was the, that we hit the highest level on record for drug overdoses. And even in our Newtown area, we're on a path to having a lot more overdoses than we did last year, just looking at the statistics. But I do want, I do appreciate the recognition of the officers who save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just had a quick question. How did your, how did your mock assessment go? Did you pass?
Mock assessment was outstanding with no major issues observed. The formal assessment is they're arriving May 23, and they depart May 24. And we'll find out after that if we get our accreditation. But I'm fully used to expecting we will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other item under my report for the board's consideration. Please recall that we had budgeted $182,000 in the capital plan for the purchase of three police vehicles. We've received quotes. Vehicles and equipment is becoming harder to get our hands on with the supply chain issues and lack of availability. So we have obtained the quotes from Chapman Incorporated as well as Havas for the upfitting and the lighting of these three vehicles in a total amount of $161,713.65. The appropriate motion would be authorization, or motion to authorize the purchase of three police vehicles from Chapman Auto Group and upfitting through Havas Incorporated through Co-Stars in the combined amount of $161,713.65.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. I need a second.
Second.
We need a second. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. We have a motion and a second, so it's on the floor. I just wanted to repeat for emphasis that $182,000 was budgeted, and they're coming in at $161,000.
That's correct. We do plan on upfitting these cars with the computers and other equipment that is necessary. So we will come closer to that $182,000, if not go over, if prices don't remain where they are today.
Got you. There's one other thought that came to mind, just looking at mileage for several of the units. I mean, over $100,000 for several units, so. I mean, I know I always like wearing it as a badge of courage if I can keep a car for $100,000 miles.
Well, right, and what our insurance providers have suggested is that these, there's actually a multiplication factor on the mileage of a police vehicle because they're constantly running. It's a multiplication of three. So any of those cars that are approaching $100,000 miles or over are actually, runtime is actually 300,000 miles.
Yeah.
Wow. So I don't know. Chief, do you want to speak to anything related to the current status of the police fleet?
Just a brief overview. I know the police fleet costs a lot of money to the township and the township presidents. But since January, we had three vehicles that the engines became blown. I opted not to replace the engines in the vehicles because each of the vehicles had over $100,000 on them. It was putting good money in the bed. It doesn't make any sense to me to do that. They're sitting in our lot over there. In addition to that, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 vehicles dating back to 2007. Each one of them had over $100,000 on them that are first-line, frontline police vehicles. As you know, this past month, we've been running our cars extremely well. If I could play a video, an audio, of a gentleman's call that I received on my email about how officers were responding to the hospital with that young child inside the back of his car. If we're doing a $120,000 mile car, if that was your kids in the car, you'd be cashing up to buy us new cars. I do believe that the board should consider whether ARPA money is available this year for additional units and move it forward, a minimum of four units a year in order to keep up with the mileage. I'm putting our, you heard my report, 25,000 miles a month on a police car, on a police fleet. It's your call. Just to give you a little voice, but right now I have nine vehicles with over $100,000, and I got three cars with bayed engines, and one at a body shop that was hit by a fire truck, awaiting parts.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. So we do have a motion on the floor. Any other, any other questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the questions. Those in favor of that long motion that Mr. Lewis said that's for the three police cars from Chapman Auto Group upfitting through Havas through Co-Stars for $161,713.65. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have under my report.
That brings us to minutes, bills, and reports. Ms. Snyder?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 27 meeting, 2022.
You just made a motion, so do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? All those in favor of approving the minutes of April 27, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to pay our bills in the amount of $232,110.
Okay. So we have that motion, do we have a second? I can second that. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? All those in favor of paying our bills to the tune of $232,110, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-1. And one more time.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for, to approve our inter-fund transfers in the amount of $242,384.41.
Do we have that motion? Do we have a second? I can make that second. Any discussion from the board about inter-fund transfers? Seeing none, seeing, any comments from the public? All those in favor of paying of the inter-fund transfers in the amount of $242,384.41, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right. And I believe that brings us to our second round of public comment. Are there any additional public comments this evening? Not seeing any. We'll move on to old business. Any old business to discuss? I guess I will just make a quick comment so we get a status report on the fire services agreement. In an effort to clarify some language, we discovered a difference of opinion on one item. We would have otherwise probably had a vote from the borough last night, but they need to review it one more time. Hopefully, that won't slow us down too much. We, I think we plan to maybe have a vote on it at our next meeting, two weeks from now. So if we can get things ironed out in the next two weeks, it'll be on our agenda. And enough time for you to read. It's only five pages, so. Not like some agreements we get. Would you say that's?
I would say.
Okay, good. Thank you, Ms. Snyder, for cooperating that. All right, any, no other old business, any new business? Okay. Any need for an executive session, Mr. Lewis or Mr. Solicitor? Okay. Given that, and?
I would, are you calling for public comment?
We did already.
I'm sorry.
I'll recognize you.
Thank you.
The evening is still young.
Hi, my name is Ann Longen. I'm 407 Sawyer's Lane. And it's my understanding that the legal firm, this is talking about 5G, that was the, who actually created the original ordinance that was used for this ordinance that we're using here, is out of Pittsburgh. It's a general PA ordinance. And the ordinance and the letter of questions are based on this inadequately written ordinance from Pittsburgh. There are a few points that will protect the safety of the residents of the jointure that need to be addressed. And all are within the PA Act 50 law. There's nothing that isn't inside the law. We need an ordinance that follows Act 50 and also that protects the safety of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business? Seeing that there is none, without objection, I will call us to adjournment. Thank you. Good night.